Good evening, Portage families and welcome to our town hall on COVID-19. I'm Mark Belank, Superintendent of Schools here in Portage. We're thankful that you're with us to do some learning together. And we're also grateful to the Kalamazoo Health and Community Service Office and their staff to do this presentation to all of you this evening. Our goal tonight is to listen and to learn and to receive some good information to help us prepare for this school year. Our format this evening is an hour long. Approximately the first forty-five minutes or so will be presentation from the Kalamazoo Health staff. And then we have some questions that you've submitted that we'll try to get through as many of those as we can. And post the remaining questions on our website at Portage Schools under the Frequently Asked Questions section. So we're excited to start the school year and we know that to do that well, we all need to work together, parents, teachers, staff, administrators, as well as our community partners. So we look forward to the information that will be presented this evening. Thank you again for joining us and I'll turn it over to Jim Rutherford to do introductions and to get us started. Jim?
Thanks, Mark. Appreciate the opportunity to come and speak with you. We've been taking this presentation on the road for quite some time now and we're glad to be able to spend some time with the Portage School System. We've got a couple of different presentations tonight. I want to introduce Mary Franks. She's our epidemiologist who provides some data updates. It's important for us to kind of set the table before we move forward with with our discussion regarding COVID as it relates to schools re-engaging. You know, there's a lot of different information out there, but what Mary's done is is take specific information relative to Kalamazoo County and then do some comparisons as that relates to some state and national data as well. Also with me is Penny Born. Penny is our nursing director and Lindy Warner is our operations director. So without any further ado, I will turn it over to Mary for her presentation. Mary?
All right, thanks, Jim. Good evening, everyone. I am going to review COVID-19 data as it relates to the K through 12 population. So I'd just like to always start with a brief situational update just to kind of let folks know where we're at. So as of today, in the state of Michigan, we have had ninety-nine thousand two hundred laboratory confirmed COVID-19 cases with six thousand four hundred and twenty-four COVID-related deaths. As of this afternoon, in Kalamazoo County, we have one thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight confirmed COVID-19 cases with eighty-seven deaths. So the graph that you'll see here on the screen is called an epidemic curve. And what this graphical representation does is it shows the number of new COVID-19 cases by date and it shows this through the entire pandemic. And so you can follow the timeline. You can see here that Kalamazoo County received our first COVID-19 positive case on March ten. Follow this timeline until today. So I'll direct your attention to our largest number of COVID-19 cases per day at the height of the pandemic. And that timeline was from mid-April until mid-May. When a lot of the state was shut down, we saw very, very little activity here. You can see that we had a pretty steep decrease at the end of May until about the end of June. As the state started to reopen different economic sectors, we did see a slight uptick in cases here in early July. And we expected to see that with more of their state reopening. However, I do want to point out that the orange line here represents the seven-day moving average. And this is really how we look at the number of cases as a trend. And we've seen an overall decreasing trend since mid-July. And it's important to look at the trend instead of, you know, one day's worth of data because one day is really just a snapshot in time. And there's a lot of nuances that go into the data reporting. If there was a lag, you know, if if we saw a particular outbreak, there's a lot of things that can make the day spike. And that's why we we really looked for that trend to indicate what's happening in Kalamazoo County. And you can see here for the past over a week, we've really seen a significant decline in the number of new cases per day. So moving on to hospitalization data. So we have had one hundred and sixty-four total hospitalizations to date. And this is a cumulative number. It's not reflecting the current inpatient totals within our hospital systems. So I've graphed these hospitalizations by admission month. And as we would expect, this graph follows the trend of our epidemic curve that I just explained. So we really see the the height of the hospitalizations was in April and May. And then we see it decrease significantly. And to date, in August, we've had six hospitalizations. And of note, for that K through twelve population, we'll be looking at the zero to nineteen-year-old age group. And of the one hundred and sixty-four hospitalizations, six of those have occurred in that zero to nineteen-year-old population. And this accounts for three point seven percent of the total. And just another note, no hospitalizations of the zero to nineteen-year-olds have resulted in death. Moving on to childcare data. So Kalamazoo County has over one hundred licensed childcare facilities. And the Health Department surveyed these just to get a better look at the data that we're seeing within these, within these facilities. And so we got a response from thirty centers. And of these thirty that responded, thirteen of these have not closed during the entire pandemic response. And of these thirteen facilities, they serve eight hundred and eighty-six children. And we've seen four positive cases of COVID-19 within this population, three being from staff, one being from a child. And we haven't seen any secondary transmission, which means more cases that have arisen from the original positives that we identified. The remaining seventeen facilities have reopened in either May or June. And these seventeen facilities have five hundred and sixty-six children attending. And we've received five positives from this population, two from staff, three from students, and no secondary transmission within this population as well. Moving on to Kalamazoo County cases. So all of these are COVID-19 confirmed cases within Kalamazoo County, broken down by age group. So you can see here on the right side of the screen that we break our age groups down as such. So we're really focusing on the zero to nine-year-old population and the ten to nineteen-year-old population for the K through twelve data. So you can see here that just over two percent of all of our cases within the county have occurred in that zero to nine-year-old age group. And ten percent of our cases have occurred in that ten to nineteen-year-old age group. So if we combine both of those age groups, we see that just over twelve percent of all cases within Kalamazoo County have occurred in adolescents under the age of nineteen. And of note, many of you may be familiar with the Lakeside Academy outbreak. This is a residential setting where the students live there. They spend all their time there. They ate there. They were there twenty-four seven. And unfortunately, within this facility, they did not employ any risk mitigation strategies. They did not adhere to public health guidance and there was a significant outbreak. So if we exclude the cases that occurred in the Lakeside Academy from the ages zero to nineteen, if we exclude that from the Kalamazoo County total, then we see that ten percent of cases in Kalamazoo County have occurred in adolescents under the age of nineteen with the exclusion of the Lakeside Academy outbreak. Moving on to Kalamazoo County deaths. So as I already mentioned, no deaths have occurred in adolescents under the age of nineteen. That's zero deaths and zero percent there. And, you know, really, we can see that very few deaths have occurred in the next age groups here. I'd like to point your attention to the red section of the pie chart here. So nearly half of our deaths within the county have occurred within this eighty-plus-year-old age group. Over a quarter of our deaths within the county have occurred in this seventy to seventy-nine-year-old age group. And over seventeen percent of our deaths in the county have occurred in this sixty to sixty-nine-year-old age group. So what we're seeing is this population here, that sixty-plus-years-old years old, really accounts for the burden of the mortality from COVID-19. And also worth mentioning is that we've seen a significant amount of deaths within our long-term care facilities. So nearly three-quarters of our deaths within the county have occurred in long-term care facilities. And unfortunately, we know that this population is the most vulnerable due to their age, due to their health conditions, and they're really seeing the burden of the mortality for COVID-19. All right, moving on to Michigan data. So these are all COVID-19 confirmed cases within the state of Michigan. They are also broken down by age group and they do the same age breakdown as we do in Kalamazoo County. So that zero to nine-year-old age group and the ten to nineteen-year-old age group. So as you can see here, less than two percent of all cases within the state of Michigan have occurred in that zero to nine-year-old age group. Less than seven percent of all COVID-19 confirmed cases have occurred in that ten to nineteen-year-old age group. If we combine these, you can see that less than nine percent of all cases within the state have occurred in adolescents under the age of nineteen. Moving on to Michigan death data. So less than five deaths have occurred in adolescents under the age of nineteen. This data is suppressed due to data validity and reliability reasons, but it is less than five. So very few deaths in the state in this age group. We can see here our next highest age group, that twenty to twenty-nine-year-old age group and the thirty to thirty-nine-year-old age group. We can bind the three lowest age groups here, so ages thirty-nine and under. We see that less than one point five percent of all the deaths have occurred in thirty-nine-year-olds and younger. Another way to look at that is here. So we can also say that ninety-eight point five percent of deaths have occurred in those aged forty-plus. So you can see here that the majority of the deaths are in these older age groups. So similar to Kalamazoo County, you can see here that over forty percent of all deaths within Michigan have occurred in that eighty-plus-year-old age group. Over a quarter of the deaths within the state have occurred in the seventy to seventy-nine-year-old age group. And nearly eighteen percent of all the deaths within the state of Michigan have occurred within that sixty to sixty-nine-year-old age group. So really, we're seeing the same trend in Kalamazoo County. The burden of the COVID-19 deaths are in the older population. Moving on to the United States cases. So these are confirmed COVID-19 cases in the United States by age group. And you can see here on the right that the CDC breaks down their age groups a little differently than Kalamazoo County and the state of Michigan. So you can see that they do a zero to four-year-old age group. And you can see that just under two percent of all cases nationwide have occurred in the zero to four-year-old age group. And then they also do a five to seventeen-year-old age group. And you can see that just over six percent of all cases nationwide have occurred within the five to seventeen-year-old age group. If we combine these two, then eight percent of cases within the United States have occurred in adolescents under the age of nineteen. And lastly, moving on to United States deaths. So you can see that very few deaths have occurred in the two youngest age groups. So within the entire nation, zero point one percent of deaths have occurred in that zero to four-year-old age group. And the same percentage, zero point one percent of all deaths have occurred in that five to seventeen-year-old age group. If we combine the three youngest age groups here, which would be twenty-nine years old and younger, so zero to twenty-nine, we can see that less than one percent total deaths that are COVID-related have occurred in cases under the age of twenty-nine within the United States. All right. And that does it for my data piece and I'll turn it back over to Jim.
Thanks, Mary. And I appreciate your your continued. Mary spends a lot of time doing research and keeping us all apprised of of this rapidly changing situation. So we're very fortunate to have her. So what I do at this point in time is talk about the COVID-19 Return to School Guide. And again, the data update is important for us to kind of get some perspective because oftentimes it's easy to lose perspective when there's so much information out there and you really don't know, you know, oftentimes where to get your information and how valid it is. So what I talk about is really a lot about the Safe Start Plan. This is the document that the Governor's Office put out at the end of June, which pretty much identified where we're at in the state as it relates to COVID-19 and what would have to happen or what has to happen as we consider the re-engagement of our schools. As you can see from this, this slide, this is considered the Michigan Economic Recovery Region, but it's being used for the COVID regions as well. You can see that Kalamazoo County is in Region Three, which is also titled the Kalamazoo Region. And that's with nine counties in southwest Michigan. We are identified, or there's been identified, five different phases of COVID transition or activity, one being the worst and six being post-pandemic. Right now, we are, based upon the data that we have in the state of Michigan, we are designated in current Phase Four, which the status of the virus is indicative of the fact that the number of new cases has overall fallen. But overall, there's still activity within the state. What that allows for within the Safe Start Plan is that schools can continue or develop their plans, but it allows for in-person instruction within the schools. So under the Executive Order twenty twenty-one forty-two, the school districts had some responsibilities that have all now passed. But what they needed to do was by August fourteenth, each school had to develop their own plan. It had to be sent to the state superintendent. And then on the following day, on August fifteenth, that plan should have been approved by your respective Board of Education. And then by August seventeenth, that plan should have been made available to the families within that respective district. It's important to note that really, within the state and certainly within Kalamazoo County, there's really a lot of variety or variation as it relates to the types of models that are being proposed. On one end of the spectrum, you've got schools that are going, you know, full face-to-face learning on five days a week. And on the opposite end of that spectrum, you've got schools that have elected to pretty much just continue remote for a given length of time. And then in between, the vast majority of the schools have selected different hybrid models that have parts to it that allow for oftentimes families to make decisions and options that that they can select. The other thing that people need to remember is that it's really, it's up to the respective school board to make decisions in terms of that model. And school districts have the ability, if they want something more stringent within their respective model, they have the ability to implement those. Again, just a reiteration that we're in Phase Four, that we are, really, our guidelines or roadmap is the MySafeSchool roadmap that we're going to be alluding to for the first part of this presentation. In terms of the authority to close school buildings, you know, that's oftentimes within the authority, either through the school or through local public health. Oftentimes, those are conversations that we have in unison. So this plan or this presentation, we've built in some hyperlinks here so that, and we've made this available and will continue to make it available. But this is a direct hyperlink. For instance, if you want to go in and look specifically on the Start Plan regarding personal hygiene, that'll take you directly there. So that's that's kind of a nice little tool to have. So ultimately, we get a lot of questions from just about everybody as it relates to how safe is it to re-engage our schools for face-to-face learning? And I really go back to, I always kind of divert that question back to a conversation about, you know, who's most vulnerable? And as as Mary had just indicated moments ago during her presentation, really, the data is pretty indicative in terms of what populations are being hit the hardest by COVID. And really, that's people, it starts over the age of forty, but it really gets significant beyond sixty years of age and higher at seventy and even higher at eighty. As Mary had indicated, you know, seventy, close to seventy-five percent of the deaths that we've experienced in Kalamazoo County are within our long-term care facilities. Oftentimes, these are individuals that have what's considered a lot of comorbidity, which means they may have several different underlying chronic medical conditions. They may have other diseases that they're dealing with, but that's that's not uncommon for for that population. So we know that people over the age of sixty are vulnerable. We also know that kids are typically less impacted by COVID. However, we also know that we have a population within that subset of kids that oftentimes have comorbidities themselves. They may have chronic diseases. They may have a comorbidity. They may have a compromised immunity as a result of something like coming back after chemotherapy and in terms of trying to fight cancer. So those are populations that we have to be cognizant of as well in terms of really focusing our our energy towards those particular populations first and foremost because, again, they're the most vulnerable. So when we have this conversation with school administrators and with leadership, we often go back to, have you spent time? Have you looked within your particular system? Are there employees that might fit this criteria? Are there students that fit this criteria? And those are really some focus points that that we recommend that they look at. Other, you know, risks associated with school settings is really about exposure. And what do we do to try to minimize or reduce the likelihood of exposure? We know that probably fifty percent of the COVID cases are occurring in individuals that are considered asymptomatic. That gets even higher when we go through the zero to eighteen age group. So that's, you know, kind of a hidden reality, that asymptomatic or an individual that actually is harboring the virus in his or her nose and mouth, but they're, but they just don't exhibit symptoms, which, again, is not terribly uncommon. Cohorting is important when we look at, when we look at congregate environments, trying to trying to minimize that cross-exposure between the middle school, between the high school, between this group, between, you know, band, between football. I know that that becomes extremely challenging within schools, particularly when we get in the middle and high school when they're, you know, they're interacting a lot with one another. They have other things that, you know, historically put them in different rooms throughout the day. So we know that that's a challenge. But some of the success stories at the national level with with those bubbles that have been created. And the NBA is a great example of that. The NHL, where they've been doing these courting bubbles, have been very successful. Unfortunately, we don't have all of the resources that that exist at the NBA level. But the the concept of cohorting is an important one. And it's one that the schools should be entertaining to look at. How can we cohort better to reduce, again, that that exposure from one group to the other? Other contributing factors involve intensity of exposure, frequency of exposure, duration. And I'll get into a little bit more about that in a subsequent slide. And then, as I had indicated, both personal health and the age of the individual has a lot to do with how risky it is for those particular individuals. It's important that we talk a little bit about some disease, COVID-specific disease terminology. And when we talk about how COVID is spread, it's spread either through droplets, which are larger. They're released when people cough, sneeze, or talk. They can be spread directly by kissing or sharing personal items. Aerosols are smaller than droplets. They're created when we breathe, we talk, sing, sneeze. They're lighter and they can stay in the air longer, but they tend to evaporate quicker. Sometimes the objects or droplets and aerosols end up on objects. And, you know, there has been times when objects can spread COVID. But the predominant route of of transmission is through either direct contact from individual to individual, close contact where either those droplets or aerosols are being transmitted from one nasal passage mouth to the other. Transmission is something that that we hear a lot about in terms of communicable disease. This is a pretty simplistic chart that identifies choice, the chance of the likelihood of transmission. You can see that you're really at your most vulnerable or highest opportunity for transmission when we've got an asymptomatic carrier, somebody that's not exhibiting symptoms, that is in close contact to an uninfected person. Neither of those individuals are wearing a mask. We can reduce that exposure somewhat when the uninfected person wears a mask. It even gets more reduced when the asymptomatic individual wears a mask. We lower that even further when both individuals wear a mask. And then we're really at our best in congregate environments when both individuals are wearing a mask securely uh in that they're six feet away from each other. So, uh, early on throughout the process of COVID, particularly in the early months when all we had out and about was our essential workers, we really employed workplace screening um significantly uh within factories, within uh, uh hospitals, uh within public health departments, where um we would do temperature checks, where we would do health screening questionnaires. Um, you know, uh, health screening continues to have a place in terms of a tool within our toolbox. Um, however, we know that the reality of schools effectively doing, you know, temperature checks for hundreds of kids that are presenting in the morning or getting on a bus is pretty unrealistic. So, we're not asking the schools, or we're even not recommending that the schools do that. Again, we've got a lot of, of this particular population that, that could have COVID and they don't exhibit any symptoms. So, sometimes that health screening, you know, provides a, a false sense of security. We have provided a toolkit that came out to the school several weeks ago, and it's called our COVID-19 Return to School Toolkit. And all of the superintendents have that now. Hopefully, they're helping or they're beginning to share that information with the families. We really want to emphasize the, the importance, the, the real importance, the significant importance at this point in time for the, the families to take ownership of, of their students as it relates to the condition of, of their health. Uh, no point in time should any student or employee within the school be coming to sick uh to school sick. We're just strongly, strongly encouraging that the parents and the families monitor their children for signs of, of, of illness. Again, that information that we provided uh in terms of symptoms to look for uh is readily available. CDC's website has a lot of information as well. But um, you know, we ask the schools to really work uh in unison with their employees to make sure that, that those health screenings are done. And that can be done, you know, teachers can, the staff can take their temperatures themselves in the morning and self-monitor that. Um, you know, the county has employed a method where when I turn my computer on in the morning, it automatically asks me, "Do you have symptoms? Do you have any of these symptoms?" So, there's a lot of different um methods and, and tools that can be used. But at, at the end of all of this, really what we're strongly, again, uh encouraging is that, 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 you know, people, when they're ill, need to stay sick. This is going to become even more important as we, as we transition from um the late summer to early fall when we really start to look at our seasonal influenza activity as well as our common cold activity. Unfortunately, some of the symptoms that you see in uh both the seasonal influenza and cold are, are similar or identical to that that we see in COVID. It's just another level of complexity that we have to deal with, but, but, but it's something that's on its way. Oftentimes, we'll go through some scenarios, but I think that, given the fact that we've got a lot of questions that we want to be able to address, we'll hold these uh till the end. Um, scenarios have been, you know, we get a lot of people that say, "Well, what, what happens if this happens?" And really, what we, what we want to emphasize is there's really no one formula that we're going to be able to, to articulate to, to any of you that says, "This is how it's going to happen." Because communicable disease investigation oftentimes is a very complex, complicated um situation that involves um a lot of different public health interventions. Um, and I'll get into that in a little bit. But contact, or the next couple of slides, again, I talk about some of the tools that we use. One of those is called contact tracing. I'm sure most of you have heard that term at this point in time. Contact tracing has been around before COVID. It's a tool that we use in public health, really to, to be able to identify somebody that may have had exposure to somebody that is, has a communicable disease. So, we do contact tracing to try to really identify who may have been considered a close contact. And I'll, I'll go into the definition of close contact in just a minute. But contact tracing is something that we employ. I have nurses that that's all that they do. When we get a positive uh, uh COVID case, we'll begin that process of doing contact tracing, uh making sure that we, we are, are identifying anybody that may have had exposure to somebody that's had, been infected with, with COVID-19. So, the other two terms that we want to make sure everybody has a clear understanding of, because I think that oftentimes there's a lot of confusion regarding the word quarantine versus isolation. And quarantine is the, the term that's used to identify somebody that may have had exposure to somebody that actually has diagnosed COVID-19. When we quarantine an individual, and that's the result of us doing that contact tracing, we identify people that may have had that exposure and we ask them to quarantine. This is uh an intervention, a public health intervention that we use to prevent the spread of the disease, uh making sure that, that we stop it there at that source. Oftentimes, people that quarantine aren't necessarily positive for COVID, and it doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to run out and get a po- or a COVID test, because it can take some time for COVID uh to actually get to the COVID within a, a human body to get to a point where it's, it's measurable with, with a, a test. Um, typically, people that quarantine, they need to stay home. They need to separate themselves from others. They need to monitor their health, and they'll follow the directions from either their primary care physicians or their local health department. Typically, quarantine lasts for fourteen days. Isolation, on the other hand, is really the, the term that's used to uh identify people that have actually been uh, uh diagnosed with COVID. They're symptomatic, they've been tested, and uh they are uh considered to be infected with COVID-19. We ask them to go into isolation. Uh, people, again, who are in isolation, similar scenario to quarantine. They need to stay home until it's safe for them to be around others. Typically, that's ten days, uh and they need to be at least a day with no fever and their symptoms have had to uh dissipated. And again, I go back to that term, "Close contact." There's actually a CDC uh definition for "close contact." It's a fairly generic definition in that it, it talks about, you know, the fact that what the, the CDC considers to be a close contact is somebody that's uh within six feet of an individual um that is COVID-positive for longer than fifteen minutes. Obviously, there's other scenarios where someone may have uh, you know, been having something less than, much less than fifteen minutes where they're kissing somebody, or they sneeze on somebody, or they get sneezed on. Obviously, that's a close contact. Somebody that lives in, resides with somebody is, you know, uh, you know, all the time, that's considered a close contact. That close contact comes, obviously, from, from congregating, human beings congregating with one another, uh either in the lunchroom, uh in the school settings, on playgrounds, on sports teams. Um, you know, we always get the question, and it's, it's a good valid question, you know, if, if, if a teacher, for instance, were to uh be identified as COVID-positive, does that necessarily mean that we have to quarantine the entire class? And the answer is, not necessarily. And, and we'd have to do our investigation, we'd have to do our contact tracing. And from that contact tracing, from that investigation, we kind of put uh, you know, forth our recommendations for the necessary quarantine. Again, that, that intervention strategy uh takes some time and it takes some time for us to be able to, to, again, answer those, those variables. Um, I, i- in the end, you know, and, and Penny Born says this to me, reminds this, reminds me of this all the time. It's really on a case-by-case basis. And I say that when you've seen one uh COVID uh nineteen outbreak investigation or even one COVID outbreak um positive case, there's, there, it's just, it varies from, from case to case. So, there's really no textbook as it relates to, this is exactly how it has to be done in every situation. So, you know, ultimately, this leads to the question of really, what, what happens when somebody at the school gets COVID-19? Um, and really, what you're going to encounter most likely at the school is somebody that may present with symptoms. And we've provided these uh, these numbers, and these are going to be constant numbers that we uh always have somebody available to, to respond. But this is the school liaison nurse number is here, and then the communicable disease nurse number is here as well. Either of these numbers can be um, can be called to, in, in, in um, to report, you know, a symptoms or a positive COVID case. We'll, we'll be working with the school um when we get that notification of symptoms. Um, what we do ask, and this next slide really depicts the, the flow chart, what we do ask is that, um, again, typically, what you're going to encounter within the schools is hopefully, a student didn't present to school in the morning with symptoms, but if in the middle of day or throughout the day, a student presents with symptoms, we ask that, and the schools um are aware. We've been working with the superintendents for several months now, but we've asked the schools to really designate uh an area, uh, an isolated area where those students can go. Um, the student needs to be monitored by a staff member. Both the student and the, 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 the staff member should be wearing surgical masks. Uh, the staff member should be diligent about trying to distance themselves from that, that student. And then right away, as you do in any uh, any incident involving an illness, we want the parent or the guardian to be notified. And then we really want, you know, to expedite the, the process of having the student um get out of the school uh without any interaction with any of the other students. And then that, we're, we'll anticipate that call from the school um to our HCS school nurse. That's when, you know, it's the responsibility of the, the family to really work with their primary care doctor. If they don't have access to a primary care doctor, then obviously, we have a federally qualified health center, a family health center, that we can help steer them. But really, the doctor, the, the practitioner has to do the diagnostic work here. They need to determine whether or not uh COVID testing is necessary uh based upon that diagnosis. Uh, and then uh, once they administer that test, the results of that test are really the impetus for our involvement. So, uh, the next step would be, in the event that it's actually comes back positive, that's when we begin our process of reviewing um, you know, the results of the test, beginning the process of having the conversation with leadership at the school, making sure that we're um, you, you know, we're doing the contact tracing that's necessary. Uh, and, and again, identifying um who indeed uh should be isolated and/or quarantined, um, not and/or, but or quarantined as a result of that, that investigation and that contact tracing. The green area here is, is simply the same thing, except this is what happens when a staff or, or an employee of the school uh presents with symptoms. Again, we ask them to, to uh be removed or, or go, go to their primary care doctor as quickly as possible so that's, that same process can ensue. So, what I talk about a lot is um, when, and Mary alluded to, to the words "risk mitigation", and, you know, what does that mean? It basically means, what are, what measures can we employ to really reduce the likelihood of transmission of COVID-19 within our schools? And, you know, what I always try to compare this to is a, is a, an example, because it's, it's easier for us to kind of understand this, because COVID is new to a lot of people and there's a lot of anxiety associated with COVID. But really, it's, it's as simple as when we think about driving a car. So, if I drive a car and I adhere, and I, I take all of those measures that are readily available um and that have evolved over time since, since the first automobile hit the road. So, we know that if I put a seatbelt on, if I, if I uh am not distracted, if I adhere to the, the speed limit, if I adhere to, you know, stop signs and I adhere to, you know, road laws, if I eliminate um the, the, the distraction of a cell phone, if I eliminate the distraction of other passengers in my car, um, what I'm doing is I'm eliminating the likelihood of, of being engaged in an accident, or worse, being killed as a result of an accident. And really, when we talk about COVID-19 mitigation, it's nothing different than that. That's exactly what we're, we're, we're looking for here. There's measures, there's things that we can employ within our schools, within our universities, within our communities, that really, if we're diligent about these, and I'll talk about, you know, these really six recommendations, if we're diligent about these, then we're really, I going to think, going to be successful at trying to reduce that likelihood. We're not going to say that it's not going to happen, because we know it's happened. It's happened in Kalamazoo County and, 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 and we've had some cases, very few cases in congregate settings, and the only comparable we have is obviously those, those school settings for, for our early childcare centers. We've had it in long-term care facilities, we've had it in our homeless shelters. We know that it's going to happen, but we can reduce the likelihood of that happening. And also, the other port, important part of really, um, I think mitigating this and mitigating large outbreak uh scenarios is really having procedures to deal with positive cases. And those are those intervention strategies that I talked about for the last couple of slides. So, these are the, the six things that I really want people to, to take home with them uh and think about, because i- this isn't complicated. And honestly, uh, you've heard about this, uh, i- if, if, if you've turned on the TV, you can't get around this stuff, but we're going to say it again. Um, but really, uh, you know, stay home when, when you need to. If people are sick, I don't, you know, we don't want any heroes. You know, a lot of time, that old, that old uh mantra of, you know, "I'm, I, I gotta go to work, I, I got too much that's built up", that can't fly anymore. We just can't afford to have people that are potentially vectors or potentially transmitting disease in the school. They should be home until those symptoms subside uh in that they've had interaction with, again, primary care uh physician oversight. Uh, hand hygiene and respiratory etiquette, washing hands is so critical. And again, what's interesting about these tenants is that they're not new. Some of them are new and they're specific to COVID, but things like staying home when you're sick and, and washing your hands and coughing, you know, into your mask or coughing into your sleeve. We want people coughing into their mask now. But these are things that, 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 you know, are really good public health practices that sometimes we need to remind people of, but they've been around for, for, for centuries, basically. What's new, obviously, in the mix is cloth-based coverings. And, you know, if you said to me back in Jan- or February or March that this would be a big part of this, I'd say, "I, I can't believe that", but it did, and it evolved to something that's, you know, pretty significant in terms of protection. Not only are we really protecting ourselves, but more importantly, we're, we're protecting people uh that are around us uh in the event that I, I may be as an asymptomatic carrier. Both those masks, as, as, as I identified in a previous slide, are really going to help reduce the likelihood of that transmission of, of those aerosols uh in those droplets. Then, then the other three considerations are physical distancing. We know that within schools, that's, that can be sometime, sometimes challenging. I know that in talking with your particular superintendent, you've got some, some hybrid models that hopefully, in the beginning, are going to reduce the density of, of individuals within the building, thereby hopefully allowing for maybe the ability to, to, to uh increase that distancing. Um, I can assure that your staff has been very mindful of how can we effectively do this? You know, what, what do we have to change within our environment? Again, to try to accomplish that distancing to the best that we can. Uh, adequate supplies. We really have been talking with the superintendents about making sure that maintenance and the buildings and grounds and everybody that, that does cleaning um for the school is really on top of their game. We just want a clean environment. Again, that's nothing new for just good public health practice, making sure that soap dispensers are, are full, hand sanitizer is ready, readily available, and that you have ample supply of, of disinfectant and such. And then finally, just messaging, communicating with your families, making sure that they have the resources that are readily available, putting signs on the, the, the walls, uh getting, you know, those infographics out to your, to your families and such, so that everybody's, you know, educated and on the same page in terms of some of the things that we've been talking about this evening. And then finally, we talk about air quality and um in this presentation, we include this article um from the EPA. And there's been a lot of discussion on, you know, the efficacy of, of, of uh HVAC filters. And indeed, some of them do remove um or reduce uh particles uh as small as, as a, a COVID uh, a virus. So, there is some, some value in, in looking at filters within your respective schools. Got to be very careful. There's a lot of filter um uh companies that, that make claims. Make sure that you do your homework, make sure that, you know, there's, there's um, th- there's validation to the, to the claims that they make. Um, you know, the, the other thing that really, we try to really en- encourage within the schools is uh, what's, what's effective most of all is how quickly can you exchange air within your respective classrooms, within your respective building? Uh, and really, that's a conversation with your maintenance department and, or, and/or a consultant to come in and, and do those measurements to see if there's things that can be improved. You want to get that stagnant air out and that fresh air in a, as, as quickly as possible. Um, some buildings are going to be obviously more effective at that in terms of the, 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 the age of, of their HVAC systems, but that's part of the consideration as well. And then finally, these are the resources that, again, And then finally, these are the resources that again, are just hyperlinks to some of these great, you know, documents and great sites. I'm real proud of what we do at Kalamazoo County in terms of Lindy and her staff just do a significant amount of education and they do Facebook videos. They do a lot of work on media to really reach out and, and try to educate our community as best as possible. So with that, I believe, Mark, we're going to transition to you to kind of help facilitate some of the questions and answers.
Great, thanks, Jim. Presented a lot of, a lot of wonderful information, important information and stuff that some of the things that we've heard multiple times, but always something new that you introduce into the mix. So, so thank you. And, and I think a lot of the, a lot of the questions that we had this evening, you, you've addressed much of it. But there are a couple that, that in the, in the few minutes we have remaining, maybe I can ask in a different sort of way or you can build on a response. The, in, in regards to the symptoms, and I'm kind of paraphrasing a couple of the questions here. Are there some symptoms perhaps that are, that are bigger triggers than others in, in keeping kids home? You know, with allergy season coming along and, and the sniffles and the flu season? Can you give a little more guidance to both parents and to, to our staff? Is, is there a, a real trigger point to keeping a stu- a student home from school with certain symptoms?
I'm going to defer that to Penny Born, my nursing director.
That's a really great question. And unfortunately, there is not that one symptom that triggers us to say, oh, that's definitely COVID. One of the newer symptoms of COVID has been the loss of taste or smell. But we, we know that always isn't a positive case when that happens as well. So, and then the kids we're seeing, well, in general, we're seeing a lot milder symptoms right now. We're seeing coughs, congestion, sore throat, headaches. So just some real vague symptoms that make it real difficult. So unless it's something, and what we're telling people is if it's something new for you to experience, especially this time of year, we have a lot of kids with allergies, allergy-like symptoms. If they always get that croupy-like sounding cough in the fall, that's probably going to be croup. We'll probably still want to check with their physician to, you know, make sure that they agree with that assessment. But a lot of parents know their kids really well and they're going to maybe know some of those things. Or others are going to be very, very vague and we are going to have to have them refer to their family physician.
Great. Thank you for that, Penny. You also touched about the importance of masks and mask wearing. So thank you for doing that. Any guidance to parents on these cloth masks, on frequency of washing? And, and what they might do to, to, to keep their masks as safe as possible? And then are doctors, the healthcare providers, are they the ones that we should be expecting information on if a, if a student can't tolerate a mask or shouldn't be wearing a mask? Is there a, how do we interact with the healthcare profession regards to that?
Yeah, I think it would be up to a physician to decide if a child cannot wear a mask. But really, with these cloth masks, there's very few medical conditions that would negate them not being able to wear a mask. So most of the time, they are going to be able to wear that mask. In, in caring for the mask, I would say try to wash it daily. I mean, I know with the hustle and bustle of schools starting back, that's always not going to be possible. But that's a, a good idea to just, ideal to try for is to try washing that at least once a day. If it becomes soiled before that, or if they've sneezed in it, or if it's things like that, then you may want to change it out a lot sooner than that.
And hopefully, you know, the, the kids, I, I know that, Mark, you guys have probably been doing your work in terms of acquiring PPE and having some masks readily available. In addition to the cotton mask, the, the surgical masks that you see just about everywhere now are very efficient. They're, they're, they're very good mask. And there's been some research that identifies that both cotton cloth mask and these surgical masks are extremely effective. You don't have to have an N95 mask to, to be protected. And a lot of the N95 masks have to be fitted anyway with a, with a, with a, a piece of equipment. So there's a lot of options out there now. Hopefully, families have had an opportunity to kind of stock up on that. Never should we be in a situation where a child hopefully is without a mask. And we want to make sure again, that there, that there have access to clean masks on, on a regular basis as well, because a dirty mask is really probably worse sometimes than no mask at all.
Yeah, the, this is where we really need help from our families with mask wearing, especially those students who are going to be riding the buses. We expect all students to wear a mask getting on the bus and staying while they're on the bus. And, you know, for that driver to be distracted by trying to monitor mask wearing as well as driving a school bus is, is very dangerous. So any help that our parents can give us and, and really reinforcing that with their students that those masks are important for, for their own health and safety as well as of their, of our drivers. So thank you on that. Is there, well, in one of the earlier conversations we had, you talked about this, there's a little bit of a lag time between when, when someone may test positive or be identified as, as a COVID positive patient and when the health department is notified. And kind of brings up the communication piece between you, your department and our district. Anything more that you want to say about that with the, the notification of how you get notified from the healthcare professionals and how that carries out to us being notified?
Yeah, certainly. COVID is a mandate, mandatory reportable disease, as are some of the other diseases out there. But they get that dumped, it gets dumped into a statewide system. MDHHS is our system. And we look at that, I mean, it's live streaming. We, we, we are constantly having that in front of our nurses and we're looking for those cases to come up for us. Occasionally, sometimes the lab isn't able to get that test in right that, you know, day and they will call the, you know, the parent or the patient and let them know that they are positive. So in that case, if you guys find out about it first, you give us a call. But when we find out about it for sure, we'll, we'll be giving you a call as well. And then we'll work through that process of investigation and case investigation.
So if a, if a student tests positive and we're notified as a school district, the process, your process would be to contact us? We'll work together to find out what the cohort, what the, the cohort might look like, what the environment was like, and then you would in turn contact the families to have additional discussion?
Yes, yeah, yeah, that's correct.
And then one of the questions is, are there any, any requirements in, in light of this pandemic for flu shots this year for, for anyone? And what's your, what are your recommendations on flu shots?
I have some recommendations, but yeah, we, we can't mandate vaccines in this country. I don't think that'll ever happen. But actually, in our business, we do have our nurses and every employee get that flu vaccine, because we do believe it is really important. And especially this year, we want to try to keep people as healthy as possible. And that's why we're maybe pushing the flu vaccine a little bit more this year to encourage people to get that flu vaccine so they stay healthy and don't get influenza and then maybe get COVID at a later time, you know, until that COVID vaccine is available to us, maybe later this fall or early this winter.
It, it is, yeah, looking ahead towards that, will that be a, a voluntary thing as well? Or will there be, will that be a mandated vaccine?
It's going to be a volunteer thing as well, yep.
Okay. See here if there's any questions that, yeah, so this one is, are there, are there any, is there a point at which the numbers in Kalamazoo County will require districts or schools to go all virtual?
Well, I'll, I'll address that. The governor is working, we're working in unison with the state health department to really, I think, work on more of a metric system where we're identifying particular data points within every community, every county in the state, so that we're all kind of on the same page as to what we're measuring. Again, we're fortunate in, in Kalamazoo County that we have our own epidemiologists. There's not, you know, a ton of them in the state of Michigan. So again, we're, we're fortunate to have that. You know, in terms of decision-making, when we have significant activity that puts us back into a phase before phase four, obviously, then the state's going to step in and say, okay, we're now in phase three. Every school has to go to remote learning. And obviously, your, your plans had to address that as a, as a potential contingency plan in the event that we go there. And nobody wants to go backwards. And it's really important that, that again, the diligence that we apply and we're having the same conversations that we have with K through 12, we're having those conversations with Western Michigan University, with Kalamazoo Valley Community College, with our, with our, you know, organizations. You know, I, I just want to remind the, the community that basically, most of the outbreaks that we've seen have come in environments where people are congregating and they're not really adhering to those public health recommendations. So examples that we've seen at a bar in Ingham County and East Lansing, events where we see large groups that are, again, congregating in very close contact with each other, they're not wearing a mask. Those are potentially what we call super-spreader environments, which can lead to an outbreak. And, you know, those outbreaks can be very challenging for our health systems. And, you know, we've been, again, very fortunate for going on, you know, six weeks now of that seven-day downward trend where, you know, our hospitals are in very good shape as it relates to their availability. So, you know, hopefully, we don't have to have that conversation. But in the event that we do, there are contingency plans to address that.
Well, I know we're, we're running short of time here. Maybe we can finish up with one more question. And, and this is, this is one I heard you answer earlier today. And the question is about why can't teachers take students' temperatures? We're asking parents to do that before they come to school in the morning. And I guess either one of us can answer that, but I'd like to hear your perspective on that again.
Well, you know, if, if a school wants to employ health screening that involves taking temperatures, then that's, that's something that they can do. They have to step back and say, how feasible is that? I know that some of the smaller private schools with very small populations have incorporated that process. But again, it's, it's oftentimes, it doesn't really portray or represent the, the reality that we've got, you know, that K through 12 group, a lot of them can be carriers without really exhibiting a temperature. So it's, it's a tool, just like a lot of other things at this point in time. I, I don't think it's at the top of my list. I wouldn't, I wouldn't say, yeah, you can go without mask and you can, you can forget about social distancing as long as you're doing health screenings. You know, I would say that health screenings are valuable, but they're certainly not at the top of my list as it, as it, in regards to, again, those really, those columns or pillars of, of good public health practice, those six items that we talked about.
Thank you, thank you, thank you all, Jim. And Mary and Penny, thank you for joining us. Lindy as well, thank you for being with us, giving us part of your, your evening. Thanks to all of our, our viewers out there, our parents, for, for joining us this evening. We know we couldn't get through all of the questions that we received. And some of the questions we received are, are best answered by our principals or operational staff and, and other district leaders. So we'll do our best to put together an answer and post it on our FAQ section of our, of our website. So we appreciate your, 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 your joining us again this evening. And Kalamazoo County staff, thank you for your time to, to help teach us, inform us on what's going on. We hope that everyone has a wonderful rest of the evening. Thank you for partnering us, with us and wish everyone the best as we start another school year.
Thank you, Mark.